We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's a pleasure to call this meeting of the Natchez Mayor and Board of Aldermen to order. We'll ask everyone please stand for our prayer to be followed by our pledge. At this time, I would like to ask Caroline Deason, who is the Director of our Human Resources Department, to offer a word of prayer this morning.
Dear Father, we just want to thank you this morning for allowing us to be here. Lord God, we thank you, Lord God, for allowing this meeting, Lord God, to transpire, Lord God, be with Lord God, the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen, Lord God, the Attorney, Lord God, and all the people that is in the form, Lord God. I ask of the Father that you strengthen, Lord God, not only, Lord God, this meeting, Lord God, but this town. Lord, I ask of the Father that you be with us. We have gone through so much, Father God, in the last couple of months. Lord, I'm asking, Lord God, should you fill us with love, Lord God, and compassion for one another. I ask of the Father that you, Lord God, search, let us search our hearts, oh, dear Father, and begin to, Lord God, call upon you. Lord God, in this meeting, Lord God, let it go the way you have ordained it to be, Lord God. And, Lord God, I ask of the Father that you strengthen each and every person that is here. I just want to thank you, Father. I want to thank you because it was you, Lord God, that woke us this morning, not ourselves around here. I thank you. I thank you for everything that, Lord God, that you have brought us through, every, Lord God, sickness, every, Lord God, hatred, and everything that you have brought this city through, Lord God, continue to build us, Lord God, stronger than ever before. I just give you praise, Lord God. I give you all honor because it goes unto you anyway. Let us begin to, Lord God, think of you and everything that you have done for us at this time, Lord God. I thank you for everything you've done, everything you're doing, and everything that you're going to do. I give you all these blessings in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Deason. Let us now join together in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderman Hall?
Here.
Alderman Fraser? Alderman, Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Maroney?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll have approval of minutes. Madam Clerk?
Yes, so the first set of minutes that we have is the July 8th. It's a regular board meeting and requesting approval with a few necessary corrections that have since been made, since we've sent them out to everybody.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Second set of minutes is the July 29th Special Call Meeting. Also, a few corrections have been made since these were sent out in your packets.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion. We will call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. At this time, like, we'd like to welcome our visitors. We have one on the agenda to see this morning, Mr. Joseph Smith. He is the founder of Black Natchez, and he actually has a presentation this morning about a music grant that they are finalists for. And we're going to ask for the live feed now to include Mr. Smith in our meeting. Good morning, Mr. Smith. Good morning. Oh, we gotta get your volume. Hold on.
It's probably.
There we go. We got it. All right. Mr. Smith, a pleasure to see you and looking forward to hearing the news you have to share. And you have five minutes. The floor is yours.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay.
A little louder if possible.
All right. Let me know, let me know when we're good on the volume and I'll start talking. I'll just test it out. Are we, are we getting better? We're getting better? Okay. I was gonna start singing, you know? Thank you, Mayor and Board, for the opportunity to present to you. As the Mayor said, I am Joe Smith, the founder of blacknatchez.org, and I am sharing some exciting news. We have been selected as a semifinalist for a grant, a grant that is being made available by the Levitt Foundation. It's a Levitt Music Series Grant. I do have a presentation, and you can tell me if you can see this, because I know some people need to see the words. I'm a visual learner, so let's see. We practiced this, so I hope it works. Let's see. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, good. How about now?
All right.
Yes, so this grant opportunity, it's called the Levitt Amp Natchez, and as I said, it is being made available by the Levitt Family Foundation. We have been selected as a semifinalist for this grant. We were selected out of 300 other applicants in the country. This grant seeks to activate with music underused outdoor spaces to create welcome, inclusive destinations where the power of free live music bring people together and it bigerrates community life, which I think is perfect for Natchez. We love music. We love bringing people together, so I thought it was a perfect grant to apply for. As part of the grant, if we are awarded, we will have funding to present 10 concerts a year in the MLK Triangle, five in the fall, five in the spring, much like the Live at Five. And if we are awarded, this grant will take us from 2026 through 2028, so it will be three years of live music in the MLK Triangle. Our idea is that this will happen on Sunday afternoons because if you've ever been in the Triangle on Sunday afternoons, it's pretty dead. So for us, it is the opportunity where there are the least amount of negative impacts on our, our neighbors, our local businesses. The church is generally there in the morning until about 12:00 or 1:00. They, they use that, the parking lot there in the Triangle. So we are, we have made all considerations that we could think of for our neighbors and friends as we were submitting the proposal for this grant. All performing artists, if we are awarded, will be paid. That's one of the stipulations of the grant. Another stipulation of the grant is that we must be welcoming to genres of many different sorts. The Levitts were music enthusiasts, enthusiasts, yes, they were music enthusiasts, and it was really important for the grantees that they award that we demonstrate a broad variety of music to expose the communities where the Levitt Music Series are presented to different forms and styles of music. So this concert supports, the concert series, if we are awarded, supports our mission as an organization to create a thriving heritage tourism ecosystem, ecosystem. We want to hire performers and event support staff, which supports our efforts for workforce development, provide live world-class destination entertainment, which means that we give people a reason to come to Natchez, to come to the Triangle, and we further activate the eastern gateway to downtown Natchez, which is the MLK Triangle. You will remember that we did a downtown master plan, and on page 77, it talks about the intent of the MLK Triangle, the vision for the MLK Triangle. I just want to highlight the last sentence of this paragraph just above the San Bern Insurance Fire Map that says, "Serving as an easterly anchor of the overall downtown, this area," meaning the MLK Triangle, "has the potential to celebrate the community's African-American culture and to offer a new venue for visitors to enjoy activities such as sightseeing, dining, shopping, and live music." I want to further draw your attention to the planning principles that were embedded by the public, especially number 1, 2, 4, and 9. Number one, which was to establish this culture, this area as a hub for African-American culture, a cultural district. Number two, to stabilize and preserve and rehabilitate historic buildings, which we have done. Number four, to transform the Triangle into a high-quality public space, which we, through this grant, will help to do. And number nine, to capitalize on Natchez's position as part of the music triangle by programming music featuring blues, jazz, hip-hop, and other relevant forms of music. So in our mind, this grant supports the vision of the city, the vision of the public, since all of these planning principles were embedded by the public. If we are awarded this grant, this grant will be a win-win for all of Natchez. The name of our organization is blacknatchez.org, and sometimes people think that that means only black, but similar to the Indian Village, which is open to everyone and celebrates Native American culture, and similar to Temple Benai, which celebrates the Jewish culture but is open to everyone. Black Natchez celebrates the history and culture of African-Americans, and it is also open to everyone. This is a image of what we kind of sent in for the grant. I'm sorry, it's not Mr. Wyatt's painting, but it served the purpose to help people to kind of see what we are imagining. We would like to use the buildings, the buildings that we own, Doll Babies and 1720 Gallery as the backdrop, because this gives us a larger vantage point. We've had other events in the Triangle, and what we learned is that when we activate things on the porch of the barber shop, it kind of limits the line of sight. So our vision is to have the bands kind of stay over toward the building so that you can kind of see from more vantage points. We hope to continue our partnership with the city. We've worked with the city in the past on several successful events in the Triangle. We will continue to need the support of the police, the fire, the EMS, working in partnership with Ryan and Parks and Recs and Public Works and with our community liaison, who was Leefahard, and I'm excited to meet the new person. But we hope that this concert series, if we are awarded, will be a strong partnership, continued partnership with the city and the city departments. So here's where we need your support. In order for us to advance to the next phase, we need votes from our community. So from September 5th to 15th, people can text Natchez to 877-495-525. Don't worry about writing that down because we will send out emails. We will have yard signs, social media posts, all about the ways that you can vote, and anyone from anywhere can vote. So we want to encourage you to tell your friends who love Natchez, your relatives who love Natchez, your children who love Natchez, to go and vote for us, because if we win this grant, we get to have 10 more concerts a year in Natchez. Okay? Oh, and this is just wishful thinking. This is a beautiful stage. If we have $40,000 laying around, I think this mobile stage would be a game changer for Natchez, so I just wanted to drop that in as something to think about that we could use for Live at Five or the Levitt Amp Natchez if we are awarded. So that's my presentation, Mayor, and I will pause for questions if people have questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate your time and sharing exciting news with us. Alderwoman Hall?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we take under advisement this site for this project.
Okay. A motion has been made to take under advisement the site for the project. Do I have a second?
I want to amend that.
Certainly, Alderwoman.
I'm going to ask why this. I've had a conversation with Mr. Smith about this, and I think that this would be a great idea. I know he's looking to reach out for partnership and support in reference to it in that area. He's wanting to bring things, and I think it would be in access to their community. So I don't want to come back at the situation. So my motion would be to vote for it now, to make a motion. That's what I would want to do.
Well, I can entertain your motion until we entertain the motion that Alderwoman Hall has made. Do I have a second on her motion? Do I have a second for Alderwoman Hall? Alderwoman Hall, your motion dies for lack of a second. I'm sorry. Is there a motion now, Alderwoman Irving?
Yes, I make a motion to, I make a motion to approve and support the, I can't think of what all the details were.
The concert series?
The concert series, yes.
All right. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Irving and seconded by Alderman Maroney. Do we have any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderwoman Hall.
We are planning, this is going to be the site of Rebels Plaza.
Yes.
It is, and that makes it.
Alderwoman Hall has the.
That's why I made the motion to take this site under advisement. A statue of Rebels, of Senator Rebels is going to be placed at this site.
Right. That's right. We, we, all of those plans are pending right now for our build grant being implemented, but you are correct. Ultimately, that site will be under renovation, and we will be proceeding with that project. Alderman Fraser, you're recognized.
Yes, I just have a question, a couple of questions, Mr. Smith. As, as Alderwoman Hall stated, this is going to be under construction. If, if you would go forward with this, are you have plans that if it's under construction, do you have plans of redirecting these, these, these events that you have to some other venue?
Yes, sir. That's, that's something that we can consider once we, if we, if and when we get to that point. There are a lot of different spaces down in the Triangle that we could activate, and when we, when we submitted the grant proposal, we did let the granters know that this was a site that was being interpreted and developed and that the construction had not happened. Part of the reason why we were awarded, that we were, I think, selected as semifinalists because the Levitt Foundation wants to activate the underused spaces, and so because there's really nothing happening in the Triangle, and I think all of you on the board, I hope, and the citizens of Natchez want to see things happening in the Triangle, I think that it's the, it's a great opportunity for us to kind of keep the ball rolling with the things that are happening. Does that answer your question?
No, yes.
Alderman Fraser still has some more.
Have you talked to all the, the partners in that area, like Don, people, Don Barber Shop, Mr. across the street?
Segal.
Segal, Mr. Segal. So everybody, you talk to them, and everybody's on board with this?
We, we have not, no, we haven't, we're not at the point where we need to talk because we haven't been awarded. We're just a semifinalist. So once we're at the point, once we're at the point where we're actually, we have to plan and activate, we will talk to all of the people in that area. We always do that with every event that we have anyway, Alderman Fraser, and up until this point, we've, we not had any opposition or resistance from any other neighbors. We like to be good neighbors, and they support the events that we've, we've done in the past. So just to be clear, we are not, we have not yet been awarded, the, the real hard work of planning with Parks and Recreation, with the Police Department, with EMS and Fire will happen once we are awarded. This is just awareness for the Mayor and Board to be aware that this is something, this is an opportunity that we are, that we are seeking, and if we are awarded, we have a lot more work to do.
Does that answer your question? Alderwoman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think it's great to have events there on Sunday afternoon. What a perfect time, too, because we usually don't have anything going that time, that day of the week and that time of the day. Are you, in fall, we don't foresee any construction starting by fall on this, to my knowledge, so I think we're safe for the fall for sure. Do, are, is there a chance you can be awarded this so that it would start at this fall?
No, ma'am. The, if we are awarded, so what happens is we'll have a public voting phase from September the 5th through September 15th. If we receive enough votes from our neighbors and the public, then we are advanced to the finalist stage, and in the finalist state, the finalist stages, when the awards, the grants are awarded, that's not until November. So our activation of the concerts wouldn't start until 26, spring of 26.
So we might want to just admit it as long as there's no construction.
As long as, right.
Yeah, and if, and if there is at that time, we can certainly, you know, find another area that we can.
Well, like I said, there's other areas.
In rotation of allowing all their persons equal time, Alderman Maroney is recognized next. Then I can come back.
I think it's a great thing. I think it's a great way to utilize, I mean, the whole thing is about utilizing underutilized spaces. Now, later on, when the big project goes through and that becomes our Rebels Plaza, and, you know, if it, if it's no longer suitable for the concerts, it's no longer an underutilized space. But by that time, I'm sure we will have proven that, hey, we are a worthy recipient of this thing. We've got another underutilized space, and we'll probably be able to just move it to somewhere else. But, but it's a great way of bringing people to that space, and for right now, helping people visualize what we can turn that area into, which is really what we want. We want that space to become something that's community-centered, where everybody gathers there. That's what we want out of it. This is a great way to get that started and get it into people's heads.
That's right.
And support the whole movement to making it what we want it to be.
Thank you. Alderwoman Hall?
I'd like to reiterate, we have fought hard to make, to get this grant, the $25,000 maximum grant. I'm sorry, million grant for Rebels Plaza, beginning at Forks of the Road. St. Catherine Street is a thoroughfare. I don't think there's been any communication with our city planner about the site of this project or this event. We have submitted a grant and been awarded $25 million for Rebels Plaza at this very site. For the first black U.S. Congressman ever, whose statue would be placed at that site. I just want to reiterate that. And, and St. Catherine Street is a thoroughfare. And St. Catherine Street was not just for black people. Italians lived and worked on St. Catherine Street. The Jewish community lived, as well as the black community.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring this to a close. I think all that the motion does is express support.
Yes.
Obviously, there are various details to be worked out. That is a major thoroughfare, so working with police, working with fire, and working with others, as we always do with all of our events. But I do like the fact that a lot of great work has gone on here.
Yes.
We'll call for the question. The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay, for the site.
With one nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. We appreciate your time, Mr. Smith. Thank you so much, and we wish you all the best with the voting that is to soon take place.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, if we can have the information shared on the screen another time so that we can, so that people can see the details.
Can you hear me?
And while we're, while we're getting that shared one more time, well, he's now all, we will share it later, but we, we appreciate, again, the good conversation. I'm going to have to ask everyone's patience with us. We have so many things on the agenda today, and I may have to skip around just a little bit. First of all, Officer Jimmy Moffas has had a death in his family and couldn't be here today due to a funeral, and so we will have that presentation delayed until another time, and our prayers go out to Officer Moffas and his, his family. We do have with us a gentleman from Entergy. I'm going to ask you, if I could, to just beg your patience with us, because we have attorneys that are, attorney and developer that we have promised will give their presentation at 11:30. That gives me five minutes, and I think that's enough time for Lynette Smith to provide her presentation, because I know, Ms. Smith, this won't take very long, so I'm giving you five minutes. And we're glad to see you.
You're absolutely right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to give a brief update of where we are with the home project. So I contacted Mississippi Home Corporation last week, if I'm not mistaken. So I contacted Mississippi Home Corporation last week, if I'm not mistaken, it was last week. And they, we received environmental clearance, so that's a good thing. So when I contacted them to let them know, hey, we have received environmental clearance, can we move forward with the contracts? Please send the contracts to the city because that's the next step. Well, I was informed that Mississippi Home Corporation and HUD are revamping their contracts. So currently, what that means for the city is we are at a standstill with moving forward with a professional services contract. I do not know how long that will take, hopefully it won't be too long. But as soon as the city receives their contract from Mississippi Home Corporation and we execute that contract, we can move forward with the professional services, which are your legal services, your title opinions, and your asbestos and lead-based paint inspections that will be conducted on each unit. Attorney Lazarus does, he does have the contracts that for him to review when that time comes. But he does have them in his possession.
Yes.
So I just wanted to give the city an update on where we are. Unfortunately, it is a standstill and I can't contact the homeowners. Just letting them know the status updating where we are. Maybe that can cut down some of the calls and...
Give them a take.
Yes.
Ms. Smith, we know you're working very hard and some things are always out of our control.
It is.
But we will look forward to that being resolved soon, we hope, and, and being able to move forward. Do we have any questions, comments from the board? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that less than five minutes?
That was two and a half.
Thank you very much.
You did great. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Smith. And we do beg everyone's patience. Yes, yes, Ms. Hunter, are you thinking you can go in two and a half minutes?
Absolutely.
Wow. Ms. Leah Hunter, we're welcome, we're glad to welcome you, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to give a quick update on DNA's work. We're continuing our work as a designated Main Street organization where we align our goals with the needs of downtown and National Main Street four-point approach, which includes strengthening the look, feel, and day-to-day vitality of downtown. Earlier this summer, you might have seen some promotion for Christmas in July. That was our annual event in downtown Natchez where local businesses hosted sidewalk sales and extended some in-store discounts. This year, they invested in a co-op ad and we amplified that with a push on social to drive store visits and activate midsummer momentum. Next up, our awnings are popping up downtown. Most recently, you've probably have seen at least five matching black entry awnings now accenting Paul Green Real Estate on Main Street and an eye-catching white and black striped canopy that now completes consign and design on North Commerce Street. So these upgrades from our Opera Facade balcony and awning initiative are adding shade and improving energy efficiency for our downtown businesses. Additionally, these, we have more storefronts coming up in fabrication and the scheduling of those will be rounding out the, I'm sorry, rounding out the year. Just a last note, DNA has also, our design committee has taken on the lead for Fall in Love with Natchez, the initiative. And so, our design committee's work focuses on enhancing the physical appearance and functionality of a historic downtown or commercial district. So in that spirit, our collaboration with Keep Mississippi Beautiful, local gardeners, and community partners are helping coordinate additional fall beautification and cleanup downtown. And then, as, you know, many people are excited about, October is coming up and we'll be putting out information about the Pumpkin Patch Festival, which is going to encourage people to come downtown and shop and be in community. We'll have events like Battle of the Businesses, Takeovers of the Patch, storefront decorating, family programming all month long, including the Rubber Dunk Hunt, Rubber Duck Hunt, Storetime in the Patch, and Trick or Treating Downtown. So you can stay tuned for the release of our event calendar. And then lastly, I'll be attending Destination Downtown in Eldorado, Arkansas, which is our Main Street revitalization conference and municipal leaders are welcome to attend. I'd be happy to share the information with you all. This is not our comprehensive list of all the work we're doing, but it's a top-level summary. We want to thank you again for your continued support. And remember that downtown Natchez is the DNA of our community and its vitality has a ripple effect that helps energize every other sector. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Great report.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you. This brings to mind, and I'm so excited about the awning projects and the grants we got for that. But I do, it brings to mind something that I've seen happen over the years, people that do have awnings. I don't think we have any ordinance that requires that they stay cleaned and, because we have, that's been an issue before. And the more we get, if they're allowed to deteriorate and get really terrible, it's not going to be, it'll defeat the purpose of all your hard work.
Okay.
So we can consider that as...
I think that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Sounds great.
You know, I had the pleasure just last week of being there for your merchants' meeting just a couple of weeks ago on Wednesday morning. And wow, what a great meeting. The energy that's in our Main Street organization, our DNA, it's fantastic. And thanks for the great job you're doing.
Thank you for coming.
And we'll look forward to a great fall.
That's right.
But again, we love to fall in love with matches during the fall, but I think we fall in love with matches more and more every day.
That's right.
Take care.
Thank you.
Wow, you, you made it.
Great job.
And we're now, and, and I'm going to say, Mr. Reno, Mr. Rose, thank you for your patience with us. But at this time, we are going to now ask Brad Davis, who is attorney with Watkins and Eager Law Firm, to join us remotely. And we also want to welcome Mr. Chris Gurus, who is helping us as a consultant with the development project at Trace Town. And Mr. Gurus is here. So at this time, if we can have the live feed connection with Mr. Davis.
Mayor, this is Brad Davis here this morning, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you for having me in this a little less intimate format.
All right, we're going to turn up the volume a little bit. The volume's a little...
I'll do the same on my end.
A little weak there.
Is that any better, Mayor?
I don't know, I think it's okay. We can hear you. All right, well, Mr. Davis, good to see you.
Same to you, thanks and thanks, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, city attorney, city clerk, other guests that are there, thank you for having us. Brad Davis at Watkins and Eager Law Firm in Jackson, Mississippi. We, our firm has had the long association with the city of Natchez. Many of you are probably more familiar with seeing my law partner, Peyton Prosper, on these calls and active in your bond issuances and public finance matters over the years. So, quick point of personal privilege, Peyton is a lifelong resident, well, lifelong is not right. His, all of his working life has been a resident of the city of Jackson. He is doing his part here with our new mayor administration. He is being, he's probably being grilled right now by the city council to serve on the city's civil service commission to ensure that city employees have a good voice and, and their, their, things are being done the way they should be, that the workers are doing the work that is needed to be advancing the city's interests and that the city can hold them accountable and they can be protected for doing their job. So he's, he's indisposed this morning at a, at a different meeting, but sends his greetings. And I know many of you have dealt with him over time. I'll start very high level, I know you've got a busy agenda, but I have as much time as the mayor and the board and others there may need of me. But I will be relatively brief on the front end here and say, and, and Mayor, I, I, I think this is well-known, the topic here, it's on the agenda today, but talking about the Trace Town Shopping Center, the city has been having, as, as everyone there knows, discussions with some developers about revitalizing that shopping center for the benefit of the citizens of Natchez and people from the surrounding areas who want to come and work and play and shop there in the city. So as part of that, the development team, and I believe, heard the mayor say, Chris Gurus, representing the development group, is there this morning to answer questions that the board and others may have of him. But we have several items on your agenda today and I'll just walk through each one. But the, the, the city has been, has been given a general proposal from the development team to utilize the authority under the Urban Renewal Act that's contained in the Mississippi Code for, for, for the process of, and to allow for the revitalization of the Trace Town Shopping Center. And what you have before you, I believe, today are three action items, any of which you can consider in your wisdom. The first, and, and I won't take any extra time on this, but we've, as I said long, we've worked with the city and we have presented a letter of engagement for our services to help assist the city and to coordinate with the developer and the developer's team in order to proceed in a way that makes sense for the city. So that is action item one. I think you're familiar with that side of things and you can take that up as you see fit. I'll move to the meat of the matter. And of course, anytime, Mayor, if anybody there has a question, please indicate and I'll be glad to pause for a moment. But under the Urban Renewal Act, the, the Urban Renewal Act allows great discretion to a city to utilize the powers under that act to re, you know, for, for various purposes, primarily to revitalize underdeveloped areas in the city. One of, it uses some terms of art that go back into the 70s and, and some of them are words that we don't always like to say. But the statute is clear that if there is an area that is underdeveloped or in need of redevelopment, that the, that the city can declare that an urban renewal area and utilize those, utilize the powers to revitalize the area. There's a list in the statute, I won't, I certainly won't cover them all, but if there are dilapidated buildings, buildings that aren't up to, perhaps, aren't at the code or level of development that the city would like to see. If ingress and egress are a challenge, you know, getting to and from, those areas are a challenge. There are drainage or utilities challenges at those sites that can be addressed, then declaring that area to be an urban renewal area allows the city some additional authority to, to rectify those situations. And, and just, and I'll cover this again in a moment with the second resolution. But Resolution One sort of declares that area as ripe for revitalization efforts. The developer has also presented a, an urban renewal plan for consideration by the, by the city. And on that resolution declaring the urban renewal area that I just mentioned and the resolution accepting a plan, and I'll, I'll clarify what accepting means in a moment. But both, all of these have been reviewed by us here at our firm to make sure they are statutorily compliant and are in the, put the city in the best position to utilize its powers to do the things that it wants to do and does not include things like, we specifically worked with a developer and they did this largely on their own. We just confirmed things like, this is all commercial areas, it's not, it's not residential areas. We made sure that was not a part of this plan. And not, not, and to be clear, no one intended for that to be so. But we, we, we worked with, with the development team and coordinated a little bit with the city's administrative side to make sure these two resolutions pass muster in our minds, and they do. So first resolution, again, declaring an urban renewal area. Second, accepting a plan, referring that plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review in concurrence, and then calling a hearing on that plan. So let me take that step by step. Item number one, accepting a plan, in this case, does not mean approving a plan. Approval comes after planning and zoning actions and after a public hearing, which would give any citizen the opportunity to come and, and speak to this, to your, to your board on why they think this is a good idea or, or a bad idea. So accepting is not approving. You are accepting a plan so that you can put it into your process of planning and zoning and a public hearing plan in order to get feedback from those that you wish to get feedback from. Obviously, I said, second part of that resolution would be referring that plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review. And also setting, calling a hearing at a time to, to be determined based on the schedule of the Planning and Zoning Commission and other, you know, city activities. So that's the three major elements of that resolution, accepting the plan. Accepts the plan, does not approve the plan, accepts it, refers it to the planning and zoning, and sets up a scheme for calling a hearing so everyone can have, offer an opportunity to, to talk on that. Chris may comment on this further in a moment, but I'll, I'll steal a bit of his thunder. Urban renewal bonds are, are not as frequently used as perhaps other urban renewal plans, are not as used as frequently as perhaps TIF, but it allows sort of the maximum flexibility really to do redevelopment in an area that already exists. TIF works best, for those who may be thinking TIF versus urban renewal. TIF works best when you have a, you know, sort of a, in some ways, a bit of a, of a blank slate. That works a little bit better in a revitalization of an area that already has existing businesses and activities. Urban renewal works much more efficiently for the benefit of the city and for the benefit of the developers. And, and to be clear, we work for you. So we're looking out for your interest, but I, I can state that it, it works for both sides in these cases who desire to move forward. A couple of examples of urban renewal projects, one of which is the biggest example, and Chris was helpful to remind me of this in our lead up to today's conversation. So, and he was involved in these projects and can give greater color if you'd like. But the Bass Pro Shop in the Trustmark Park area of Pearl, largely, there were some other tools used as well, but urban renewal plans, I, I forget the amount of money spent, but it was tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars of private and public funds that went into building the Bass Pro Shop and, and the Trustmark Park. And it just worked really well for 25 years and has entered a new phase now. We also just worked with the city of Pearl, another like Natchez longtime client, on an urban renewal project last year to revitalize three shopping areas in the city of Pearl, kind of in the older areas of Pearl. Everybody's kind of familiar with the development on the interstate now. But in the sort of old Pearl, near the city hall, on Highway 80, there were some under, underused, underdeveloped areas in need of revitalization. And this was the toolset that the city of Pearl used to address that, that, that area of the city. So recent examples, a sort of a historic large example and, and sort of a recent example as well. So these are quite common, not as common as perhaps TIPS, but still very common in our, in, in the state of Mississippi and in our marketplace. And this, this act can be used to revitalize those areas and include the improvement of public infrastructure in those areas, whether that infrastructure is, is owned property owned by a development group or owned city property. Things like water and sewer and flooding and drainage control things. And, and also including some sort of what I would call beautification, you know, new lighting and other things. I'm, I'm kind of jumping around on the, on the purposes, but broad purposes...
Mr. Davis.
But can be well-known.
Mr. Davis, Alderman Hall has a question. Alderman Hall, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am, Alderman Hall, good morning.
Yes, good morning. I, I'm all for urban renewal, this plan. However, the only expenses and fees we see are yours, for the, for your legal firm, not to exceed $3,000. And we're getting ready to embark upon our fiscal year 2026 budget. So there's not any kind of urban renewal bond estimate or any figures related to the urban renewal bond that we can begin to incorporate into our budget. But for fiscal year 2026.
Yes, ma'am. So what, what we have there, that letter of engagement says a couple of things and I'll address your points. Let me just talk brief broadly for a moment and maybe zero in on your specific question. So any kind of a bond issue that may happen, I would presume to be quite some time away. So it's hard to know an exact answer to your question at this time, although I can, I can sort of narrow this down a little bit. You know, the urban renewal process will be to accept this plan, as we said, call the hearings. And then the, you know, the development team's got a, as I, don't let me get over my skis, Mayor, but I believe they'll be acquiring the property and then, you know, pursuing forward. I think the development team is going to be presenting in the days ahead a formal request for, for a bond issuance. And, and I, I don't know the answer to that at this time. I think they'll come forward with that in, in due course. These, these items are setting the table for that further discussion with the city and presentation. So what we typically do in these cases is, is have an hourly rate, which I believe is reflected in that letter of engagement, that we, we bill the city for the time and time that we bill to, to the city for appearing today, reviewing documents and things like that. If you would like for us to put together a more detailed proposal for you to consider at a later date, we would certainly be glad to do that. I couldn't really estimate at this point how much effort this is going to take because we're, we're, we're setting the table now for a development plan that will be presented by the developers. So, but we would be glad to put together a much more detailed description of our services and/or what we estimate to be the fees, if you would like to hold that until a later date. We, we've dealt with the city a long time, we're not concerned. We're, we're on the team and willing to help and we'll, we'll, we'll hold on that matter.
Mr. Davis.
We don't want that to be a stumbling block to your progress.
If I could interject, we, we are excited about Trace Town. And we have ample funds in our professional services budget to take care of the initial work that will be done by attorneys to move us toward having this development take place. I'm not interested in delays today because delays mean a lot of money for developers. And it also can create delays for those important stores that have already signed on to the project and have already budgeted. project and have already budgeted now for this to go forward. We would hate to lose those funds by any delay, and I want to continue. Also, it's my understanding from the other bonds that we have done, and that these bonds, once recommended, the board will have the opportunity to vote on those bonds, to look at all the fees included in those bonds at that time, and that then we will be able to ascertain how we proceed and the actual funds that are included. The bonds themselves will actually, I need, I think it's very important for everyone to understand that the bonds themselves will take care of all of these expenses, other than these, I might call startup legal expenses to get the ball rolling. And in addition to that, I want to make sure the public understands and that we all understand that these bonds are backed and guaranteed by the developer, not by the city. They are funded by the expected sales taxes that will be generated by the new project, the increased property taxes that will be generated by the project, and should there be any default, then the developer is the one who takes on this risk. Very similar to what was done with the Holiday Inn project and the Grand Hotel project. If you could elaborate a little bit, I think that will satisfy a lot of the questions that may be out there.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Davis, no, we, we do have the amount of your expenses not to exceed 3,000, I'm not disputing that. But every time we have had, we, we've needed time to process, I'm not against the plan, I'm not saying I'm against the plan, I'm for the plan, I think all of us support the plan, we just needed some kind of estimate as to proceed with our budget hearings, which we will be embarking upon soon, which will go into our budget.
I'm, I'm sorry, bonds don't impact our budget in the way that you're referring to. The actual, this actual project will be paid for by the taxes to be generated, the sales taxes to be generated, and not from city taxpayer funds. And so therefore, these will not be coming out of the budget. We need to make sure that's clear, because I want to tell you, we're on the precipice of a historic project, a lot of work's gone on, and a lot of very important stores have already budgeted for construction and committed to a schedule to happen very soon, and I'm not for delays.
I would like our city clerk to speak.
Okay. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
So I, I think, you know, confusion here in that the only thing that's being asked for approval today is this engagement letter that will not exceed the $3,000, which we are fine with.
That's correct.
As far as the budget goes. In a previous conversation that I had with Alderwoman Hall was if there are any other financial decisions that were to be made or discussed today, I would need some ballpark while we're working on the budget to make sure that we accommodate that within the budget moving forward. But we're not, it sounds like we're not there yet. I mean, there's nothing else being asked of the city at this time, so I think that cleared up any questions that I had in previous conversations.
I'm, I'm very sure that all of that, once we get this started, all of that information will be shared with us as soon as possible. But the important thing is that we not delay that process today, because we got to move forward. Yes, any other, Alderman Frazier?
Let, let me, let me just jump this right quick to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And it might, we're getting walking, we're doing an urban renewal, right, revitalization plan. My question might sound kind of, but I want to break back to, since we got so many projects going on, are this the same, are these the same urban renewal plan that we're using for the project at Walmart? Are we using?
This is only Trace Town. We're only discussing the Trace Town project at this time.
But from, I have to talk to you, because I got a lot of questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Davis, I'm going to go back to you, because I think you were just in the middle of your presentation, and you'll answer all of these if allowed to continue, so please continue.
Yeah, I'll try to address the several questions that have come up here and then obviously others as well, so, and to, in the spirit of the, not trying to cause delay, I, I was specifically referring to our engagement being covered later if necessary, not the substance of the matter today to address Alderwoman Hall's concerns, if any, not advocating for any delay in the overall project, but I'll get back to the substance here and perhaps we can answer some of these questions. The mayor was talking about how these bonds, if, if issued, would be secured and paid for, much like a TIF, which I think we probably have heard more about in recent months, perhaps years, at trainings and discussions over projects. These urban renewal bonds would be secured by the revenues generated by the project, sort of clarifying from the developer, but secured by the revenues of the project, meaning that the additional, and so the, that will be secured by the sales taxes generated by the project, the new development that will occur in that area, new businesses that may come in, you know, having some of the perhaps existing businesses that might have new sales taxes generated because of the improvements, and if the new businesses are bringing in additional patrons, maybe they'll spend more money at, you know, people coming to spend money at the new business may spend monies, additional new monies at the old businesses that may continue to exist in this area. So the bonds be secured by the sales taxes generated by the project and by ad valorem taxes generated by the project. Presumably, the value of that property is going to be increased by the, the tax pay, the, the ad valorem taxes paid by tenants and others could be increased because of the additional value based on the improvements. So the bonds would be secured and paid from the additional and new, the new sales taxes generated in the area and the new property taxes generated by the area. And not to belabor this point, but traditionally in these bond issuances like these, the costs of legal and other types of financial advisor fees, I know the city has had a longstanding relationship with, with financial advisor firm, those are typically paid for out of the project funds, out of the bond issuance when it occurs later, any monies that may be paid in advance for those types of things would be, could be recouped out of the bond issuance. I think that's part of what the mayor was moving towards, is that this would largely be fees of the city paid to the, to professionals related to the city would be largely paid for out of the bond issuance when and if it occurs in the future. So if that helps to elaborate on where, what the security for these urban renewal bonds would be, it's the sales taxes and ad valorem taxes generated by the, by the new project, by the revitalization in that area. I believe Alderman Frazier may have asked a question, and I'll, I'll see if I understood it enough to try to, to address that question, is this proposal relates specifically to Trace Town, as the mayor indicated, it does not include any other areas of the city, those would be other discussions at other times with other parties perhaps, but this is related to the Trace Town area specifically, if I'm understanding Alderman Frazier's question correctly.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Frazier.
My concern was like, I was talking about the other project, but since we're talking about the Trace Town area, we, you're, we're putting, you're putting a proposal for revitalization of that area, I'm trying to figure out, this area was, was done in the sixties, so the, so it should be still on the, I don't know why we had to go revitalization of bonds or whatever, but this area was already a commercial area, zone commercial area in the sixties. It was Trace Town Shopping Center, we had all kinds of businesses there, Burger King, you name it, we had it there. So now we going through this other project process?
Yes, sir, I mean, I think that's what urban renewal is exactly designed to address, it'd be historic, older, perhaps in need of revitalization areas. As I understand it, you guys, you, obviously all of you, the mayor and the board, understand the geography better than I ever could, but as I understand it, that area is not as active as it once was, and this is an opportunity that the city has with a development team to revitalize the area so that it can, you know, I guess, be, be back to its perhaps former glories.
Thank you. At this time, in interest of time, I would like to take these resolutions one at a time, starting with the engagement letter. I'd like a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with Watkins and Eager for the assistance of the Trace Town development. Alderman Maroni has made the motion, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Do we have discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Lazarus.
For purposes of clarification, we have reviewed the engagement letter with Mr. Davis and with the city clerk, and we are in a position at this point to recommend that the city adopt and agree to the letter engagement with one clarification. The $3,000 that's been referred to several times is not the total amount of the letter engagement. The letter of engagement will call for an hourly rate for the senior attorneys as well as paralegals, but the $3,000 is the amount that's included in the engagement for expenses such as photocopying, travel, postage and other things. So the $3,000 is merely expenses, the fees will be over and above that amount. So, so it's more than $3,000, there may be some confusion, we wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to ask, would, would Watkins and Eager be receiving additional funding or this would be covered under what we paid them?
This is, this is a separate agreement for this project only. We, we actually only work with Watkins and Eager now. I don't want anyone to confuse this with our lobbying contract. The lobbying contract is separate, because Congressman Harper created a separate firm a while back, if you'll recall. I want to make sure we understand, the city only works with Watkins and Eager now on our bonding projects, and we have done this now for several years, and they are advising the city on this matter, and they are going to need us to agree to terms with them for payment for those services, and that is what we are discussing today.
Okay, and then my next question is, do we have the amount that they're asking?
Yes, they have quoted the hourly rate plus the expenses in the document provided to you, and it is on their letterhead, and it was included in your package that we delivered.
I have it.
On Friday, all right. Alderwoman Hall?
Yes, in answer to Mr. Lazarus, first of all, thank you, Mr. Davis, for explaining the urban renewal bond, how we actually access those fees. But there is a maximum of $90,000 left for, for fees, so we cannot exceed the $90,000 for fees, according to our city.
I don't believe we will approach that amount.
Well, it does end with the extra, they'll come back.
I will, I will say also, I will say, as we proceed with the project, the vast majority of all of this will then be paid for by the tax revenue that will be paying for the bonds. I, I just, I, I know that there is confusion about this, but this is just very typical in how these projects work. Yes, Alderwoman Smith, you're recognized.
I was just going to call for the question.
Okay.
I have one other thing I want to say, so.
Alderwoman Irving?
Do we have an approximate amount of hours, since it's $300 per hour, that, do we have the estimate, you know?
Mr. Davis, do you, do you want to answer that question?
I, the question, I believe, I had a little bit of a hard time here, but I think she asked if there was, if we would given maybe an estimate of the number of hours that we would propose to, to, through the development of this project, is that the question? I just couldn't hear as well.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't have one, but I'm going to give you one anyway, how about that? Just so we can cap this, I don't want this to be the, yeah, that's right, I don't want this to be the reason why there's a substance here that's much more important, and we have a long history with the city, we're, we know the city's going to treat us well, we want to treat the city well. So I'm going to say that we would cap our hours through the conclusion of the urban renewal development process, right? The bonds are not going to come for perhaps six months, a year, could be longer, that is somewhat unknowable. So to take this forward from today, of this, these resolutions that have been prepared for today through the public hearing and any participation in those things, and the approval of the urban renewal plan, which I believe could be, you know, 30 to 45 days away, depending on the city's agenda schedules and planning and zoning actions, I'm just going to go ahead and say here that we would cap all hours at not more than 20 hours. I think that's a little bit high, but I think that will give you, I hope, some comfort that we're not going to get nearly close to the $90,000 number, I guarantee you, I'm not that bold.
Oh, no.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Twenty.
Thank you.
Twenty hours is.
Yes, ma'am.
Is very reasonable, and I appreciate your offering that figure. I would like to call for the question.
Glad to do that.
Well, thank you. We'll proceed to a vote. All in, I'm going to have to do this, well, not this part. The resolution will require a roll call vote, but not this motion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I, I heard a few voices silent, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, I want to make sure we're all understanding that we're entering this letter of engagement, we don't have any questions later. Alderwoman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
I'm going to say this, Mr. Mayor, before I vote, with Watkins and Eager, as I stated earlier about the other project at Walmart, I, I hope we can use them for the same thing, since we're getting them now, but I'm going to go ahead and vote nay, I mean yea.
Yea, okay, thank you. Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
The decisions unanimous, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is a resolution declaring the urban renewal area for Trace Town. This is simply declaring the area as the attorney has indicated, we aren't getting into the specifics, that will come later, because obviously, public hearing, a public hearing has to be held and other steps have to be taken. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion? We'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a resolution accepting the urban renewal plan, referring the plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission and calling a public hearing by the commission on the urban renewal plan. In other words, at this point, we will approve it, but it's contingent now on going through the process with our planning commission. Do I have a motion to that effect? Motion made by Alderman Maroni, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
It's already been zone commercials, so why are we going through the planning commission?
It, this is not regarding is zoning, is commercial, but declaring an urban renewal plan that will revitalize the area. And by the way, I want to apologize, I'm, I'm going to take a roll call vote on this motion, and then I will need a roll call vote on the resolution we just passed, we're moving a little quickly and I, and I skipped that. So I'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. Now, this is on the resolution accepting the urban renewal plan. Alderwoman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. And we're going to ask for another vote on the resolution declaring the urban renewal area. Alderwoman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Maroni?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. So we are now taking all, care of all three of those items. Mr. Gurus, we didn't leave any time for you to speak, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you all. We'll be presenting a financial ask for the city very, very soon.
Okay.
Heading towards trying to get the project completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We are very excited, we are. Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
Mr. Davis, I want to thank you for answering our questions, but I normally try to do this before the meeting, not to take too much time, but I was unable to, to reach you yesterday, so that's why I was asking these questions today.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for reaching out, I had an unexpectedly busy day today or yesterday, I appreciate it, and we, we look forward to working with the city going forward from here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Now, we have Entergy, and I am so sorry for the wait, but we're going to now introduce Mr. Tim Reynolds and Mr. Tyson Reno, who have an exciting plan to present to the city.
All right, well, mayor, board, I think we're a couple minutes past, so I'll go ahead and say good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Really appreciate the opportunity to come talk about this project here in Natchez. So my name is Tyson Reno, manager of products and services deployment for Entergy Mississippi. And at Entergy- And at Entergy Mississippi, we have been focused for a long time on new technologies. And one that has come up here recently has been electric vehicles. And we've noticed more and more of our customers beginning to buy these vehicles and put them on the road. We've also noticed more of them coming throughout the state. So today, I want to talk about adding some of those EV chargers here in Natchez. So within Mississippi, we've noticed the interstate corridors, I-55 and I-20 have already gotten a few of these EV chargers, so you can actually traverse these interstates. In Entergy, Mississippi, we're noticing that some of our highways and other bigger towns are being left out due to that. So we've embarked on something pretty ambitious here was to get some of this, more of this infrastructure within the state on some of these other highways that are well-traveled. Currently, we have stations in Ridgeland, Mississippi, at the Renaissance Shopping Center. We've also worked with the city of Brandon to get a couple of installed downtown for their area. And we're actually working in McGee right now to get some on Highway 49. So we've got some additional projects. We're hoping to hit Natchez, Cleveland, and Greenville so we can kind of get this Highway 61 corridor, and Natchez would be a great place to start. So I'll keep my pitch here fairly short in the essence of time here. But the way Entergy will work this out, Entergy will install two EV chargers. They are DC fast chargers with 180 KW. It's 180,000 watts of power. It works on a 480 volt infrastructure. Entergy will install two of these with four plugs, so two plugs each. Entergy will own and maintain these chargers and then collect revenue off of these chargers. This is how we've arranged this in other cities as well. And so what we are looking for is a site to place these chargers, to bring a lot of these drivers into the area, spend about that 30 to 45 minutes as it takes to charge these vehicles from about 20 to 80 percent, and hopefully have something a little extra to do other than just a bag of chips or coke at a regular convenience store. So I've got an electric vehicle myself. I've traveled around the southeast with it. It's nice to have something a little extra, whether it's a cup of coffee, maybe a plate of food while you're waiting on your vehicle to charge. And downtown Natchez is a great area to do that. So we have had some discussions around the Natchez Convention Center. We think there'd be a great opportunity right down here in downtown Natchez to provide for drivers coming to the area to then kind of get out and explore what downtown Natchez has to offer and then get back on their way. In addition to being available for other residents of Natchez to purchase an electric vehicle and have access to charging, that can be relatively quick as compared to, say, plugging into a wall outlet at your home or apartment where it can take much longer to charge. So I think, I'm not sure if everybody's gotten a copy of the presentation here, but excellent. We have identified here in the, at the convention center, the location where we'd like to place these chargers. I know, I think there's been some discussion around the expansion of the convention center, so we've got a slight modification. But we've got a transformer in place that's got plenty of capacity to serve these chargers, and we would place them right there in the parking lot for ease of access to drivers coming into the area. And you should be able to see as well some other photos kind of throughout the presentation here of what these chargers look like. We do brand them as Entergy. And we do have this kind of black and white, of course, with our color gradient for the look of that as well. And I think in the back here in the appendix is kind of some drawings on the expansion plan and where these chargers could eventually be located. But to kind of wrap it up, like I said, it's no cost to the city. Entergy bears the cost of this installation and the maintenance that goes along with it. In addition to the software and the operation of it as well, we will collect revenue off of these chargers to help pay for the cost, which ballparking has been about $400,000 to $500,000, close to half a million to get these installed. They're very expensive. That's why we're not seeing them pop up everywhere. But they're a vital resource to drivers that are coming through the area. We do need to get a few extra things in place to get a right-of-way agreement together. We do need to get a survey specifically of the area so we can call that as an exhibit in the agreement, and then we'll have that ready to sign. So hopefully I kept it short enough, and hopefully I answered the question.
Mr. Reno, I also want to just say we have met with the management team at our convention center. They are very supportive of the idea. This also is one of the very fast EV charging stations, so it won't take anyone all day to charge. How long on average will a person be parked there to get a full charge?
So typically, EV drivers will pull in about 10, 20 percent battery and go ahead and start filling that up. To get up to about 80 percent takes about 30 to 45 minutes. It really depends on the vehicle, really. And there's a time curve associated with that charging. It charges really fast in the beginning, but then it starts to slow down as you get higher up to that 80, 90, 100 percent. But ballpark's about 30 to 45 minutes. Good time to explore an area.
The other thing, we have, a good time to explore the areas around Natchez. But the other thing that we've looked into is if the city was to do this on our own, it would take many years for us to justify a $450,000 expenditure. This is actually something Entergy is doing as a service to our citizens and to our tourists. And we are very grateful that Energy is stepping in to make this technology possible. It's a great thing.
And we appreciate the opportunity to partner up on it as well. It's a new technology, and it's no secret that Mississippi has very little of it across our state, so we want to do what we want to do.
We have other questions or comments? Alderman Maroni?
I was just going to say, this sounds like a winner for everybody. I'd like to make the motion that we accept this and give them permission to proceed.
I did second.
All right. A motion has been made by Alderman Maroni, signed by Alderwoman Irving. We'll have more discussion.
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
We appreciate that you're bringing this to the board and everything, and I understand it's much needed in the community. I'm not an engineer or anything, but as I know, these are charging stations like in Biloxi and Gulfport, they're in like shopping centers. You've got four in the area in Biloxi, in that shopping center. To me, if we're going to put one, it's just proof though, you should, it should be on a major highway, a highway, it looked like you should have picked in between Walmart and Natchez because everybody probably, you got elected, most people probably don't want to even come downtown to get the charging station if they're kind of like out, where they can get to a charging station like Walmart or even going down across the bridge like going to lose out. You know, it's just where about majority of the people going to congregate.
Sure. And I appreciate your comment there. And it does tend to make sense based on the behaviors we've become accustomed to, to pulling off and filling up at a gas station, right? Especially when it takes me maybe five, 10 minutes at most to go fill up my vehicle at the gas station. I want to pull off real quick, get my gasket back on the road. For EV drivers, we know it's going to take us a little while longer to do that charge. It's going to take that 30 to 45 minutes. And in my experience, and I've been on the trip headed towards Alabama and pulled off on Interstate 20 to a very small gas station with nothing else around it, and sitting there for a half an hour feels way longer than a half an hour where I can go get that cup of coffee or go explore an area a little bit. And my preference certainly is just to go to an area that may have a few more things to do. And what I've also found in my experience is I'm going to find that EV charger. I'm going to go find it. It's going to be somewhere, and I'm going to get down there and I'm going to go find it, and I'll spend the time there. So even if it's a, you know, a couple extra miles out of the way, I'm not overly concerned about that. But I enjoy having that place to go do some things while I'm waiting for my vehicle to charge.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I'm so glad that we're getting this done, and we can't thank you enough. You really could have taken this anywhere, and you chose downtown Natchez, and we are very grateful.
We're very excited for the partnership. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience with us today. Wish we had just gotten you all in. That was really fast. We could have done that in five minutes. With that said, we have a couple other things. I asked everyone for your patience. We are moving around a little bit. Before we go any further, because these uniforms officers have other things to do than just sit here through our meeting. And so I would like to go ahead and introduce our police chief. Chief Green, I would like you to come forward and introduce these individuals who have just been promoted at your department.
Thank you, everyone. These are our newly promoted corporals. And for those people who are not aware, corporals are administrative promotions, and they are made at the discretion of the chief. They do not require civil service approval. We have Corporal Kerry Huff. Corporal Stanley Starks. Corporal Khalil Jenkins. Corporal Jessica Johnson. And Corporal Henry Johnson. These officers have all exhibited a high level of professionalism and as well as concern and care for the community and for their jobs, and I'm very proud of them. Congratulations, corporals. Thank you for your service.
I'd like to shake your hands. Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
Chief Green, congratulations to all of you. Will these corporals still be on patrol?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. They are in leadership positions in all of our shifts.
Why did we go by? Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations to the folks.
I don't know these fuckers. I do know he shouldn't be gone. He should be a lieutenant. This man here was at the police department when I was there. He left. He went overseas. He fought. He was doing special operations and everything. This gentleman here is well-versed in law enforcement. He's a K-line officer. And I can speak for him personally. Like I said, he did special operations. He worked with undercover CIA agents. This gentleman here, we got to joke with him. It's Stanley Starks. I want you to keep in mind, they call me Little Dog Dog.
I want to say that, Representative Mr. Park, I want to echo what Alderman Frazier said about Corporal Starks. I got to know Corporal Starks when I first became mayor. And always so good to see you. And hearing the, and Alderwoman Hall, that he'll come down, I'll be thinking.
I'm going back there. I was going to...
Okay. So I just want to make this statement. Back right before Christmas, Corporal Starks went through something rather scary, and I called him. I called him that evening, and I just said... Sam, you've had some unpleasant for you this evening, and I want to just thank you for what you do for Natchez. And he said, well, Mayor, it's my job. And Monday morning, I'm going to be back on my shift because it's what I do. And I'll never forget that conversation. And Corporal, that's an example to everyone, someone who goes through something that, we won't get into the details, but you were back at work Monday morning, and that's a great example.
A little man, big in stature.
I want to thank all of you, and it's just a real great thing to be here to celebrate this day. It is.
Ready? Cheese them. Beautiful picture.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Are they getting a picture there? Are you going to take a picture?
We need to get that picture sent to us. Oh, it was...
Did you get it? Did you take it?
All right. Yo, we're going to, since she's here, Chief Green, if you will go ahead and receive your report. Chief Green, we're going to go ahead and let you get your report. I've just only got a couple minutes.
Thank you very much. The only other thing on my report is asking for approval to accept the grant from the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety, and it is the same Office of Highway Safety grant that we have had for the last, I believe, two years. It's a continuation of that grant, and it is for $50,000.
Okay. Second, motion made by Alderwoman Hall, signed by Alderman Davis. Discussion? We will call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
We now will, we're moving around the agenda a bit, but we're going to ask Ms. Monroe. And Ms. Monroe, actually, as I understand it, I'm going to give the update on our behalf if you'd like for me to do that. Okay. I know we have a number of individuals here who share our concerns about the condition of the pool at the senior center. And we had, we have had a number of meetings, and if everyone will recall, this all came about back in the earlier part of the year when the company that had been servicing the pool for many years said that they could no longer service the pool due to liability concerns and due to certain issues with the pool, being that it is such an old pool. It is the oldest, as we understand it, the oldest indoor swimming pool facility, nadatorium as I learned, in the state of Mississippi that has still been in use all these years. It, number one, had a leak, but number two, it had very poor ventilation, and all the equipment being inside, it was building up toxic levels of carbon monoxide. Number three, it had very poor circulation and was not keeping up with current standards for chlorination. And all of these combined resulted in the dilemma that we could not use the pool until these issues were addressed. We hired an engineer, and that engineer, gentleman by the name of Ryan Dunleavy, and he's with Southeast Engineers LLC out of Baton Rouge. Mr. Dunleavy has, for the past month, been doing a very exhaustive analysis of the pool to bring to us recommendations. Do we have any of the drawings or any of the? We have, we actually have a hard copy of the report here, I mean, available, and we can make this available to anyone. We're looking at it on the screen. But I'm going to ask to stop right here. This is, this is fine. This is a, and Mr. Dunleavy couldn't be here with us, so I'm giving this report in his behalf. But this is a diagram of the pool. We have ascertained that the leak is in the bottom of the pool, somewhere really near that center area. And in order to correct that leak, the pool has to be drained, and then it requires quite a bit of work to the bottom of the pool. Secondly, the equipment that currently is on the inside has to be moved to the outside and a enclosure constructed on the rear, and that's what you see, that box on that upper left-hand corner, is a new proposed structure on the outside that will contain the equipment, and the equipment will no longer be on the inside. Also, the pool, to address the circulation issues, and this is the most major thing, the pool has to have some excavation work done both underneath the pool itself and also underneath the decking around the pool. That's going to require the removal of all of the tile. We've already talked to the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, and we're very grateful. Minga Tingle, our city planner, due to his experience there, has been asking questions on our behalf. Being that this is a historic structure, there are certain things we have to abide by, but they are, I believe, willing to consider the fact that once we remove all of this tile from the pool, it will be astronomically expensive to replace all of that tile. However, we can retain the tile around the perimeter of the pool... of this tile from the pool, it will be astronomically expensive to replace all of that tile. However, we can retain the tile around the perimeter of the pool, on the interior of the pool wall, and then a foot-down transition to a new plastered surface that would be painted to match and blend with the color of the tile. The tile that would have to be removed on the decking has to be removed in order for new plumbing to be installed, to access plumbing under the pool to allow for adequate circulation, and also tying into the existing trough that goes around the pool's edge. That trough would be left in place, but would be piped and equipped to work in a different way. All of that tile would then have to be put back with either same or similar tile to maintain the historic status and appearance of the pool. Now, the engineer has let us know that the expected cost of this project will be greatly more than the $50,000 that we are currently holding. Now, I want to just say, we are not going to say what that amount is, because we have learned that when we get those amounts out publicly, those wanting to bid are listening, and you can rest assured, they then provide us bids that are, on average, 25% more. And this city will no longer reveal the money that we, you know, have in a budget for projects like this, when that can be used against our taxpayers when it comes to bidding the project. Because sadly, we've seen time and time again, that information used against the city and prices that normally should not be being made exorbitantly higher just because it's the city. Those days are over. Now, I will tell you this, being that this will exceed the budget we have and that we're in budget season now, we are going to have to take this under advisement. We are going to have to determine if there are grant funds available, other sources of funding available. That's going to take some time, and I'm happy to meet with all of the individuals who have concerns, you know, personally at another date when we would have more time to discuss and also answer your questions, because this is not a public forum. At this time, we can entertain questions, because it's not the format of this meeting. But I will say, in the interim, we understand that the pool continues to be open at Liberty Park. And while that's not ideal, it is working far between 20 and 30 of our seniors each month now, currently. We understand that that pool will remain open through the month of September, allowing that program to continue. I plan to very quickly look at other alternatives and to explore whatever we can explore in the very near future. But right now, I don't have any more information to share. Also, the estimates and other work done by the engineer do not include currently a need to repaint and refurbish the facility itself, the walls, the ceiling, and even, excuse me, the dressing rooms and showers. So, that will add more. And there's also some electrical work, plumbing work, that would then have to be done by the city, not even including what the engineer's proposed. There's some upgrades the city will have to also provide in that facility. We can have more discussion and go into more detail later, but right now, that is the presentation I'm making for these purposes. There is no motion needed. We had already... We've already taken this on as a project that's currently under advisement, that we're studying. But I will open the floor if we have any Aldermen who have any comments to share at this time. Yes, Alderman Maroney?
I know we all love that pool and like having it there, but I hate to say this, but this doesn't look good right now. I'm really concerned about what we might be able to do, might not be able to do. So, yeah, I think we need to definitely be thinking about what kind of alternatives we might be able to come up with, because I think we've got to face the fact that we might not be able to get this thing going again unless we can find some sort of grant or something to...
Can you speak to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. This just sounds like...
Pull the mic closer so the...
This sounds like it could turn into an astronomically expensive proposition. So, I mean, I know a lot of y'all, there are a lot of folks here that support the pool and use the pool, and we all love the fact that we have, we've always had that pool for folks, but I'm afraid we just need to put our thinking caps on and be prepared that we might not get this pool back. I mean, just based on what I'm seeing. I mean, say we try everything we can try, but I don't know. The elephant in the room is that it doesn't look good right now. That's...
But we will keep working. We will. We'll look at all the alternatives. And I'm always also one who likes to look at thinking outside the box and other opinions and second opinions. But you make some very good points, Alderman Maroney. Alderman Irving?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say, I see a lot of people here in support of it, and truly, I'm in support of it as well. But I do agree with you, there are other ways, alternatives that we could look at with other engineers, maybe, just getting ideas and bringing them together. But I also know that, you know, it could be other funding as well, maybe from private investors who want to invest. It could be a number of things that donors, that would like to donate, you know, because they donate for other projects as well. So, I'm thinking that that would be a good investment.
That's true.
It really would be, because we want to see this stay around for a very long time, for a very long time.
Yes. Thank you, Alderman. Any further comments? I will be making myself available soon, as soon as we can get it scheduled to have a better dialogue with you. I have some questions I personally want to look into and get answers before I meet with you, so it may be next week before we actually meet. But Ms. Monroe, I know is meeting with some of you this afternoon, and she is in constant communication with me. We were even back and forth on the phone this morning around 7:00 or before that. So, thank you very much, Ms. Monroe, and thank you to all of you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any question that maybe our city planner can look at, since it is a historic pool?
We have discussed that. We certainly did yesterday to look at possibly having historic grants made available. One thing that has been concerning to us is the state of Mississippi, for the second year in a row, has not funded the Community Heritage Trust grant program. That is the grant program we have relied upon for improvements to City Hall, to the Angelabite House work that's ongoing right now, and other projects. We really need the legislature to fund that program so that these historic grants can resume, not just for Natchez, but other areas of our state.
Right.
So, I thank all of you so much. Thank you. And thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long wait to get to that point. All right. We are going to now move to Mr. Johnson's report. At this time, Mr. Johnson, you are recognized. I'm going to hand the gavel over to... I have to take a break for just one second. I'll be back. But our mayor, Pro Tim, will hold the reins.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I did provide you with a copy of my report to respective desks, as well as the already discussed interview reports, so you have it in front of you. Applying textured finish to the exterior of the Duncan Park Golf Club, Duncan Park Golf Club House renovation phase one. A motion is requested to seek quote bids to apply an exterior acrylic stucco finish to the existing cement panel siding per the scope of work from consulting architect Belinda Stewart Architects.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second, but I have a discussion on this.
That'll get us a discussion part. Okay, we have a second now. Is there any discussion?
Madam Pro Tim? Mr. Johnson, are you aware if we have any written permission from the Mississippi Department of Archives and History to proceed with this?
There is verbal. We are... We have requested written.
We have... I think we need written permission.
I agree. So, that was discovered.
We would not be able to proceed. If we can add that to the motion.
I concur.
We can add that to the motion. Who made the motion?
I did.
Yes. First, would you amend your motion to add that once we receive the written permission from the Mississippi Archives and History?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Would you confer that in a second?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a discussion.
Yes.
Was this a part of the punch list?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I can add a little bit to that. I know there were different things discussed. This was the most inexpensive way to solve the problem. Is that correct?
This was an option that was considered by several persons, as opposed to having a smooth paint finish to add a textured finish to it, and this is what that is.
The seams.
Yes. That and over the entire portion of the exterior, primarily the cement board.
All right, Alderman Maroney?
This all arose, I guess, from when we went out there and looked at it, and several other people had said the same thing. The way that the cement boards lay on there, and it was done, I think, originally to try and maintain the lines, the grooves that were in there from the original.
Correct.
And I guess, long and short, it just doesn't look very good.
I think it...
It just, I mean, we all agreed, when we went out there and looked at it, it just didn't turn out very well. And if you put a light stucco finish on it, it would just look a whole lot better without the, you know, because you basically got four bad cement boards up there, and you get these creases, and it just doesn't look right.
That's my understanding as well. Alderman?
Yes, that's more of an aesthetic issue versus...
For water penetration, yes, ma'am. More aesthetic.
It's an old building, and it's more of an aesthetics. That's why we need written permission.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm just going to ask, so does it extend the date?
Say that again. I'm sorry.
Does it extend the date for completion?
The original scope of work is finished. This is going to be done by a different contractor, will receive quote bids once written authorization has been received from Archives and History.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Call for the question?
Call.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. Is there anything else, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. Change order number six, Duncan Park Golf Club House renovation phase one. A motion is requested to approve change order number six, reducing the contract by $3,500 due to the following. Deducting the allowance to purchase, deliver, and install a custom print of all covering, $1,500. Deducting from the scope of work the painting of the exterior cement panel siding beyond a prime coat and one top coat, except in the back courtyards, $2,000. Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Second on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Top of question?
Call.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Who made the second?
Me.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Alderman Davis did.
Morgan Town Road drainage reconstruction project.
This is funded by the MCWI program through DEQ. A motion is requested contingent upon the approval of the Adams County Board of Supervisors to consider milling an additional one inch of asphalt and placing an additional one inch of asphalt above the originally specified three-inch overlay. The intent of this additional work is to extend the pavement's service life and reduce the potential for reflective cracking from the underlying concrete joints. The original design includes a three-inch asphalt overlay and two equal lifts, with the first lift intended to serve as a leveling course. The extra overlay is expected to improve surface performance and durability over time. This activity will be added to the contractor's contract by change order. The cost of the one-inch additional milling and one-inch additional overlay is $30,000. Per the joint order by the Adams County Board of Supervisors and City of Natchez dated 9/13/22, Adams County agreed to any remaining costs, expenses, and all cost overruns required to complete the project. Pleasure to the board.
So moved. Motion made by Alderman Davis.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Irving. Discussion. We'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnson?
Also pertaining to Morgantown Road. During the course of this drainage and road reconstruction project, from the onset of construction, the contractor has encountered delays and lost costs due to having to stop work and send workers home and work with utility companies, including Atmos, Adams County Water, and Natchez Water to relocate gas and water lines, because they were in the path of the project and work could not proceed until these utilities had been relocated. The contractor has estimated that his cost of stopping work, the cost of lost man-hours, et cetera, totals $264, 501, and 30 cents. If approved, if approval is received to utilize MCWI funds, the proposed cost split would be the following. MCWI share $132, $250, and $0.65. Adams County Board of Supervisors, $132, $250, and $0.65, again, total $264, 501, and 30 cents. The city would be utilizing MCWI funds awarded and obligated for Morgantown Road. Per the joint order of the Adams County Board of Supervisors and City of Natchez dated 9/13/22, Adams County agreed to any remaining costs, expenses, and cost overruns required to complete the project. A motion is requested subject to the following. DEQ allows for the use of MCWI funds for this activity, and second, subject to the approval of Adams County Board of Supervisors, and paying the remaining costs, you're totaling $132, $250, and $0.65.
So moved. Motion made by Alderman Hall and... I'm going to recognize Alderman Davis's motion, and Alderman Hall for the second on that one, being that I know Alderman Davis, she's been working on this so hard. And do we have any discussion? Any discussion? I think everything is self-explanatory. It's been a really tough project. We're really grateful, though, that we're making such progress and we're getting there. We'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item?
Request for bid furniture. Natchez Convention Center 2022, my bad, Convention Center G O B. Staff in council with Wakefield Duncan is requesting a motion to receive quote bids for the purchase and delivery of specified furniture, i.e. sofas, chairs, coffee tables, side tables, meeting tables, et cetera, for placement at the Natchez Convention Center.
It was a pleasure of the board. Alderman Fraser has made the motion, seconded by Alderman Hall. Discussion? We'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Justin Dollar, our Public Works Director.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First item on the agenda is a list of vehicles I would like to surplus. First unit is a 1999 F-350. How... You want me to go into the VIN number? Do you need that for the...
I don't... I don't believe you have to read the VIN number.
I think I have.
Everyone is in... And I would just say, when we entertain the motion, the motion needs to include, including all of this in the minutes.
Right.
Please continue.
Okay. So, what you have here is a list of vehicles I would like to surplus. 1999 F-350, a 2013 F-350, a 2012 F-350, 2006 F-350, and a 2002 F-350, along with a 2002 Ford Ranger. Here today seeking a motion to have these vehicles surplused, which we will then move to auction.
So moved. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Irving and seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion? We'll call for the question. Call. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item?
The next item on the agenda is for the purchase of a new mower max, prime mower, 30-foot side arms, 60-inch rotary deck, front lift arms, and a 90-inch... a sixty inch rotary deck, front left arms, and a ninety inch quad saw. This particular piece of equipment is, is under state contract. I have it listed on there as well. I have spoken with the city clerk about this and the funds are available within our budget.
So moved.
So second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion? We'll call for the question.
Got a picture of it.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item?
The last item on report is seeking board approval to purchase a two thousand and twenty-three single axle dump truck from the Adams County, from Adams County. And I know on here I had contingent upon the Board of Supervisors approval. They did approve it this morning, so that has been approved and they have agreed to sell it to us for the price, for their guaranteed buyback, which is seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy?
Seventy.
Okay. Thank you. Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Irving.
I have a question though.
Oh, yes, Alderwoman.
Was it just the area you said twenty-three, but it's twenty-two here, so we.
It's twenty-three.
It's twenty-three, okay.
Yeah, it is a twenty, two thousand twenty-three model Kentworth T three eighty. And they just had those, they just had new trucks quoted last week. There are one hundred and sixty-four new. These trucks have roughly around twenty thousand miles on them and they're about three years old.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, that is in your budget.
That's.
We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
So I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dollar. Thank you. Chief Green has already given her report. Ms. Monroe has already given her report. Commander Best.
Did you have something else on your report?
I don't believe so. We, we, we covered it. It was on the Aquatic Center. All right, Commander Best?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. Seeking today's board approval to surplus and list for public auction eighteen gently-used retired police guards.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion? Again, need to make sure that this list is included in the minutes. I think it just is evidence of the progress we've made in that we no longer need the, I don't want to affect their ability to be sold, but we don't need these worn out vehicles anymore. And that's the truth because we have new vehicles and newer vehicles. We've made a lot of progress.
We've come a long ways.
We've come a long ways. Yes, Alderwoman Hall.
Can we make an amendment to Alderwoman Smith? Will you include in your amendment motion to move these to auction?
Okay. Thank you. So that will be included in the motion. We'll now call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
So I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I think if anyone's really noticing, we have made a concerted effort to get the old dilapidated vehicles that say City of Natchez, Natchez Police Department, Public Works, Code Enforcement, get them off the road so that we now have vehicles that reflect the wonderful city that we are.
She's doing a good job.
We have come a long ways.
Oh, yeah. We've come a long ways.
Working together.
Chief doing a good job over there.
She is. Chief Green's doing a great job.
She's doing a great job.
All of our department directors are doing a great job.
That's right.
We'll now come to our city officials' reports. Alderwoman Hall, you're recognized.
Thank you. Recently, I met with Commander Best, Mr. Dollar, Mr. Tingle.
Thank you. Speaking your mic.
Thank you. Recently, I met with Mr. Dollar, Mr. Commander Best, Chief Green, Mr. Tingle, Mr. Burke, the mayor, and Mr. Lazarus. Alderwoman Smith was going to be there, but she had a change in the commitment. She had to kick relative some, some of the laws and statutes that were addressed at our summer M M L conference. The one pertaining, under statute twenty-one dash nineteen dash eleven, the cleaning of private properties were discussed House Bill seven thirty-three, which now has a grant program to help get money to clean public properties for municipalities, towns, and villages. However, the grant program will be conducted by the Mississippi Home Corporation, but the legislature failed to fund it. So until they fund this, there is not a grant program available as of yet. And the only amount of money that will be in this grant program will be two thousand dollars. And municipalities have up to fifteen times to apply for these two thousand dollar grants. But until it's funded, we're still doing what we're currently doing with the cleaning of public properties. The next bill was House Bill twelve oh three, which is the homeless count bill. All of these laws wanted to affect this summer, I think July one, twenty twenty-five. So we all know that it is now impossible for homeless people to be on public properties. It includes our right-of-ways, our parks. We've had issues with people sleeping in our parks in the past. And law enforcement can remove these individuals immediately. And we have up to twenty-four hours to give them notice to remove their personal belongings. And we're in process now of doing an ordinance to put this into effect. Well, there was also the panhandling bill, which is House Bill one one nine seven. We're doing an ordinance now also to put this into effect. The police department will be issuing the permits for this. Anyone who is soliciting funds, and this was broken down to cheerleaders, those who are doing car washes, boy scouts, et cetera, anyone who is soliciting money has to have a permit. And there will be a designated area, which will be on the permit, which will be supplied again by the, by the police department. And we're also doing an ordinance on the panhandling bill. Also statute twenty-one dash twenty-three dash seven, parentheses fourteen, which now provides the city court, a municipal court, to have jurisdiction over blighted property. And we've been told this does work, so. And Commander Best is speaking with our municipal judge about this. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman Hall. Alderwoman Hall.
I would like these all to be incorporated to our minutes.
Okay, thank you. I, I do want to make one mention. We have learned that there are funds available in the Secretary of State's office for us to access for cleaning up dilapidated property. It's something that has not been discussed widely, but it is something that has been made available in response to this issue. And I'm going to ask if we could for Commander Best and Mr. Burke to look into that because that money's going to go quickly, but I believe the City of Natchez could be one of the first to apply. It has not been widely publicized, but it's something that we have learned about recently. Alderwoman Irving?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask for the record that we get a copy of what she just stated, and I also want to ask.
It's going to be in the minutes, Ms. Irving.
But we still need a copy. I don't. We still need a copy of the, copy of that. And the other thing I want to ask, she brought up about a permit. If you're selling Girl Scout cookies, any event, cheerleaders or anyone, how is that information going to be disseminated to the public? Because that's something that needs to happen. And where can they purchase the permit? Did I hear her say the Natchez Police Department? I'm just asking those things. Because if we are bringing up these things, then the general public needs to know. We need to put something out there, whether it's in the, the Blood City Post, Natch Democrat, the public needs to know the changes that are taking place now. So that was what I would say with that. I mean, you read it, but that does not make the impact that it should to the general public. And so we need to produce a flyer, radio, any forms of social media. You know, that's the way we need to get that out, deliver it to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further? Thank you. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let me just address this right quick. Some of it already been addressed and I need to address it. I live for House Bill twelve oh three, this to address the growing trend of homelessness encampment on public property. The legislature passed House Bill twelve oh three. This bill prohibits encampment on public, on public, just dealing with homeless people. This bill here. Let me just say this, but we have a growing strain of homelessness on peoples encamping over in the area of Walmart. And I have gotten numerous complaints from constituents that now these peoples are moving in the direction of Natchez High School and the parents are concerned that one of these days, these people is going to come up on the campus because now during the school is started back, we have kids that's late, doing practice, late on soccer field, baseball field out there way. And like I say, I tried to explain to the constituent, if I'm not mistaken, that property over there by the high school is owned by the National Parks Service, if I'm not mistaken.
It is publicly owned.
It's publicly owned. We are, we are.
It is, it is covered by this law. And our police have been very diligent in getting the word out and working to make sure these individuals know that they cannot camp on these sites. Since you bring this up, we will ask the police to also include those areas as they are.
They have been calling because like I say.
Thank you, Alderman Frazier.
They, about that house being, now, just the other one dealing with soliciting, House Bill eleven ninety-seven. Have we, as a board, voted for this to? I know that we have voted on it. Either we have the option, we can go through with it, or we can opt out. So we need to make a motion, we need to make a motion. What we don't do is we're going to accept this.
Accept.
You know, the, the panhandling provision is,
House Bill eleven ninety.
I believe is what you're discussing.
Yeah.
This is now state law. It was actually promoted by the M M L. And the M M L worked with legislators in the Jackson area, which is plagued with this problem. And they came forth with this legislation. In discussions with the M M L, we are told that all that a city has to do is to opt in by motion and we're covered because the state law supersedes anything we do locally. I would like to entertain a motion now, if you would like to make it, that we opt in, that we opt in.
Second.
So that that will apply to the city. So that motion's been made by Alderman Frazier and seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion?
Let that be entered into the minutes.
Okay. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Now, this week, this week, I attended the Mississippi Policy Conference in Tunica, Mississippi. It was very informative. We had a number of speakers there, a number of, of, they was just giving, talking about tariffs in the state of the nation and what's going on in the country. We had one, we had, like I said, a bunch of dynamic, dynamic speakers. One was, was Ms. Joy Reed of M S N N B C. She was, she was very informative. I wanted to ask a question, but I couldn't get up to it, ask a question, what happened to N B, N B C, N B C with her? But I've been too nosy with doing that. Also, there was Congressman Al Green out of Texas. He was, as you know, he was one of the congressmen that stood up and told the president, he was, you know, he said, like, but he was there. As you know, he's always, another gentleman there from South Carolina, Jim Clav, Mr. Clav is, is a very informative person. And he's a very outgoing person. He informed us of what's going on in Congress and, and he also talked about the state of the nation. It, like I say, it's, it's just dealing with variety of, of questions, dealing with the country and which way the country is going. Last but not least, this gentleman, he was, this gentleman, he was very, very excellent speaker. And we all know him. His name is Hakeem Jefferson, Jefferson. He was there and he was just talking about some of his actions that he had taken in Congress about his long speech and everything. But overall, the conference was very informative and it was a lot of people there. And I, I really enjoyed the conference and everything. So, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's basically into my report. And as the state, there's a lot going on in the country and we just as a nation got to deal with it. It's not, this country does not, as they say, this country does not consist of, it consists of Republicans and Democrats. But the main thing, as they say, whatever is, we all is one.
Amen.
And there's no such thing as, 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 I say, ain't no such thing, but as Republican, Democrat, it's just, we are just one nation. That's all we.
One nation. Under.
Under.
I, I, that's, that's well said. Thank you, Alderman.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Smith?
My report.
Thank you. Alderwoman Irving?
Okay. I just want to say for the first time, I want to say I wish, we're in a new school year and I just want to pray for the success of our children, our youth, our adolescents throughout our school districts, our junior colleges, our universities, that they have a safe and successful year. And Mr. Mayor, that does in my report, Mr. Dollar, while you're here, I do want to speak with you because I have come up with maybe some suggestions you can listen to about hiring employees seasonal. So I just want to speak with, see what your suggestions would be for the upcoming budget year.
Thank you, Alderwoman Irving.
All right.
Alderman Davis?
That is my report.
Oh, I don't know. I only have one thing. I don't know if I, I think I might have asked for it earlier, but I want to ask for board, for board approval for my travel to a conference in Orange Beach, Alabama, September thirtieth to third October.
So moved.
The Massey Conference, the Mississippi Association of Self Insurers Conference. There are a number of government officials at that conference, including the Speaker of the House, Jason White, who will be the featured keynote speaker. And, and Alderman Davis is Chair of our Insurance Committee and has long ago expressed interest in attending. So the motion.
I'd like to go to, I'm on the insurance committee.
Okay. All right. Well, we have, we have a motion for Alderman Davis wanting to go. Alderwoman Hall has asked to be included in that motion. I think generally when we deal with these, we, we don't just send everyone because that would include other members of that insurance committee. But if you would like to, we can add.
My, my membership now already been paid, so.
Okay. All right. The motion is on the floor. It has been seconded. We'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Yes.
Just forward, since we're getting into budget, would you please forward that travel records that you sent me that we can all know that they're basically doubling our travel? It's getting out of hand. Thank you.
Well, I don't go nowhere.
I missed you. I just think.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes. It was seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Davis. I will say, I just want to say something because I may very well be asking to go to this conference. It was my attendance at this conference two years ago that allowed us to have a conversation at that conference with Commissioner Mike Cheney about funds made available for communities and new fire trucks. Immediately after the conference, we began conversations with the Insurance Department, the Fire Marshal's Office, and Adams County Board of Supervisors. Alderman Davis is Chair of our Fire Committee, was involved in all of those discussions. And what resulted, along with leadership from our fire chief, Chief Arrington, was the ability financially for us to get a new fire truck. Commissioner Cheney is very likely going to be at that conference because being the Insurance Commissioner, he attends these insurance conferences. He and I spoke last week and he said, I want you to know that I've gotten more money. He and I spoke last week and he said, I want you to know that I've gotten more money and I would like to talk about more money for Natchez. Now, if it's important enough for Commissioner Cheney to go to this conference, I don't see why the city of Natchez should be any better. I just have to state that. Now, do I agree in going to every conference and every trip? No.
Okay, that was my point.
And I think, and I agree, Alderwoman Smith, we need to watch that budget. But when there is a connection to be made that can bring hundreds of thousands of dollars to Natchez and sometimes it's simply showing up and having that time to build relationships and to make sure you're showing support, that, that favor comes. And that has been my life, my professional life for many, many years, even before becoming mayor. It is the way the system works.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to make that record and, and come to the defense of Alderman Davis because I know that when he goes to a conference, he's working. Yes, Alderman Fraser?
May I say something? Uh, let me just say, we attend, we attended the MML conference in the state. They are very informative, uh, conference dealing with the events and stuff that take place in the state of Mississippi. But it's also very important that you attend these conferences out of state, different conferences, just because of the reason you're networking, you'll find out what's going on in other cities on your side. You, uh, like they like to confer, the National League of Cities, that is a very informative conference, is dealing with issues throughout the country. And like I said, we only, I only attend three conferences a year that, uh, and that's, that's the National League of Cities and the Mississippi Municipal League. As I say, networking is, is important. I understand some peoples can't go because they have other commitment, they have to work and whatever, but, uh, me myself, I'm retired. So I feel that going to Congress, uh, is, it, it, it really, like I said, it really, really inform you of what's going on throughout the country. So, you know, some of these companies, but as you say, you don't think everybody should go, that's, that's fine. It's level to the individual, Alderman, if they want to go or not, that, that's fine. That's all, that's all I got to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman.
And since you brought that up, that's the same, when we went to MML conference, I brought back information and to reach out to Atmos because they have funding that would be available for the, uh, Natchez Fire Department as well. Um, Mr. Kiwan McLean is, uh, in representative here in Natchez, that was even brought up. So we need to look into that as well. I know we could help, um, citizens of the community to help with, uh, they have a program to assist with, um, entry details. Uh, so we need to look into all of that ways that we can help our citizens here.
I will say though, I do want to, uh, say, our mayor pro tem makes a good point though. We do have a budget. We need to make sure we are keeping to that budget and if we're over budget, we have to make decisions on which ones we go to, which ones are best for Natchez and who goes because sometimes we needn't all go, but it is good for Natchez to have representation. Yes, Alderman.
And we really don't even know what we're going to have in our budget because we don't even know how the property taxes have increased yet. And for us to all be aware of how travel is doubled is a smart thing to be aware of. But that is, I get, we all know that training is great, but there are limits to what we are going to be able to do in our next budget year.
I don't think since we've been here, then we've been over the travel budget.
We have not.
We never.
Thank you. Well, it's, it's a good discussion that we need to have.
I mean, it's, it's.
And we'll now, we'll now move on. Thank you so much. Alderman Maroney?
You're the one brought it up.
Well, now I have your report. Alderman Maroney?
I'm just waiting for them to finish.
Alderman Maroney, you now have the floor.
All right, I went to my, uh, city auditorium yesterday, they're working on the windows around the building, they appear to be doing a good job, they're scraping and sanding and, uh, we'll be, uh, treating and painting everything. Looks like they're doing a nice job. I think we're going to have, uh, property down there we can be, be proud of. Also went by this morning to Duncan Park to look at Golf Club House again and the, uh, the facade there and we'll see what happens with that, uh, with that quote bid on the, uh, the stucco finish. I hope that works out and is something that we can afford. I think it would dramatically improve the, the appearance of that building. Uh, went by the, the Angel Lady House, um, Will Maher has finished with the roof, looks good, um, they're pleased with it, uh, seem to think it's, uh, they got a, a good roof on it and it's going to keep the water out. They're just about finished with the shiny new wheelchair ramp in back, it looks really nice.
Really nice.
They got a couple of steps still, they got to finish on it, just to, uh, they had to move it around a little bit and so they're going to have to come in and put a little concrete footing on something, but just about finished with that.
I love that metal.
The roof looks really good, yeah, and that, that ramp.
Yeah, the metal ramp and the spray. And the painting inside?
Um, I don't think much has been done on the inside.
He's doing something, he said.
We're going to have to look at that, but, uh, anyway, tonight, there is a big neighborhood watch meeting, at least we hope it's going to be a big one. Uh, it'll be at Parkway Baptist Church and the Fellowship Hall where it always is. Everyone is invited from any ward, it's not just Ward, uh, Ward six, everyone is invited. Uh, Chief Green will be there, there'll be some emergency management folks there, I'll be there, we'll be talking about all sorts of things. So, uh, we'd like to have a big crowd there. I'm sure that we'll be discussing the homelessness issue and some of the issues we've had, um, in the neighborhoods over there. And, uh, anyone has any concerns for their, for their areas, bring them on, we'd love to see you there.
Thank you.
That is it for me.
Thank you. And I will go, I will go there myself, I'll be there.
Thanks.
See you there tonight. Uh, Madam Clerk, you are now recognized for your report.
Uh, first item I have is a request for approval of the first August twenty twenty five claims document.
What's the pleasure of the world? Motion made by Alderwoman Hall?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroney, uh, we'll have discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just have, have a few things here, um, sitting at the very back and it's, um, on page twenty. I was just going to ask, um, with this vendor or contractor who does the grounds, does he provide the dates? Because let me see all of this, um, the dates in seven thirty one, I just want to ask, is this the date that is the month or is this the date that he actually does the?
The individual, those are, um, two months worth of invoices for each of those locations and invoices do have the, the specific dates on it. Um, it's just been cut off in the description that's printed here, but it's in the system.
Okay, I was just asking, because I've never seen that amount at, you know, at that one time.
Right, yeah, no, he did, he was late in turning some invoices in.
Okay, and I have one other. See, I have it folded. And this is, um, just asking our, I think it's City Planning Department, yeah, contracted, um, is it Strategies?
Uh, Stillwater, again, those were late invoices, um, having been submitted.
Okay.
So that is the company that was providing, um, in the interim when we did not have a city planner.
Oh.
Um, so serving, you know, contract services to cover that position and they were late in getting their final invoices turned in.
Okay.
So that's what that was.
Okay, well, that answers my question.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is a request for approval of the first August twenty twenty five many claims documents.
What's the question?
Second.
Alderman Davis has made the motion, Alderwoman Hall has seconded that motion. We'll now have discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Next item is a request for approval of the July twenty twenty five personnel reports.
So moved?
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall?
Yeah.
Seconded by?
Oh, yeah.
Alderwoman Irving has seconded the motion. Alderman Davis?
They got employed.
I know, that was mine.
And terminated.
Yeah, when the same.
Six days.
Yeah, six days.
That obviously is.
Is that a mistake?
That happens, no, that does happen from time to time. Someone will be hired, they will start and then they will decide they don't want to stay.
Oh, that, that's.
It happens totally to block.
Okay.
Yeah.
I saw that six days, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, that, that does happen from time to time.
All right, any further discussion?
Call.
The question's been called, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Okay, uh, next and final item is a request for approval of travel for the mayor and aldermen to attend the Small Towns Conference in Philadelphia, Mississippi, October fifteenth through the sixteenth.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Irving.
And what is that, October fifteenth?
This is the Mississippi Municipal League, uh, and anyone going needs to, uh, let the clerk's office know as soon as possible.
Okay.
Uh, we'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I have to say something else.
Thank you, yes, Alderman Fraser?
And that, Miss, Miss, Municipal League, let me just say that Ms. Patterson is, is, is on her job, she has called everyone already out there and asked me, she's, you know, if they're going.
She's doing a great job, always has. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, I do understand we will have a, uh, an executive session, a brief one to discuss some litigation.
That's correct.
But you don't have a report?
No report.
At this time, okay? Uh, we will take care of that at the very end, hopefully it'll be a very short executive session. Under my report, I do want to state that, uh, I am invited now to go to Atlanta next Thursday for one night, Thursday, coming back Friday. This is an economic development trip and it is actually pertaining to a very important downtown property. And, uh, I'll have more information, um, uh, to share after that trip. But a very important story, downtown property.
Okay, so you can disclose some?
I'd rather not talk about it publicly at this time, uh, but, um, I, um, it's, it's a very important meeting. Um, I need a motion. Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderwoman Irving, discussion. We will call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Then the next item is, I do need to bring to everyone's attention that we have received a letter of resignation from Mr. Lance Harris, who has been serving for the last eight years as a member of the city's Preservation Commission. Uh, he has been a great, uh, member and at times a great chairman and a great friend to Natchez in all of the donation of time that he has given. Uh, he has expressed, uh, willingness to assist, uh, from the sidelines going forward and we appreciate that, but he has become quite busy with new roles within the Mississippi Department of Archives and History and its employer. Also, uh, we understand that, understand, we have commissioners who have been there since twenty sixteen and we may have a couple more who will be stepping aside sometime within the next month, a month and a half. So I would like for us to go ahead and open, uh, as we've done in the past, following that procedure, uh, open, uh, the process to anyone interested in submitting a letter of interest or a resume, uh, for service on the commission, to have those to the mayor's office by end of week next week. That will allow us time then to look at these and determine, uh, what appointments to make, uh, not only to Mr. Harris's, but potentially others that will be coming up. And, uh, and I'll entertain a motion to allow that process to move forward.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderwoman Irving has made the motion and Alderman Maroney has seconded that motion, discussion?
I was just going to ask, Mayor, could you mention again the specific commission?
Yes, this is Visit Natchez, Natchez Promotion Commission, uh, Natchez Convention Promotion Commission, NCPC. And these are the commissioners who serve voluntarily, uh, to help, uh, guide the, uh, tourism promotions for Natchez, for conferences and, uh, for, uh, general tourism, uh, promotion and growth here in Natchez. And so, under this motion, we will, from today until end of next week, uh, entertain the submission of any, uh, resumes, letters of interest. In the past, we have gotten some, you're welcome to reapply. And then the process will end, end of business day, a week from this Friday. Uh, what date is that?
August twenty second.
August twenty second, till five PM, August twenty second, make those submissions to the mayor's office. Uh, I will now call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, I do have a couple miscellaneous updates for you, uh, won't take but a minute. Um, we, uh, we want to, uh, really just thank all of those who have been a part of, of so many great activities recently and we've had a number of great activities. We have, uh, great things coming up. Um, and as part of that, uh, I want to, uh, ask individuals to begin thinking more and more about volunteerism because as we have these, uh, events, uh, be it the, uh, balloon festival, be it a, uh, downtown cleanup, um, be it, um, just, uh, things that we do here in the city through our Mayor's Youth Council for children. We, we need volunteers and volunteerism seems to, uh, I know we're all busy, but volunteerism seems to be a little less than it used to be. We need an uptick in volunteerism. Uh, and, and also with that said, uh, we are having this afternoon on the front steps of City Hall, uh, program that we're going to, uh, be acknowledging our Special Olympics athletes and those athletes, uh, are all from the Miss Lou area. They have participated in, excuse me, in summer games, early summer on the North Coast. So please come out as we give them, uh, certificates and medals of recognition. That will be held at, at four o'clock. Um, there are other things I guess I can cover, we'll be sharing those from time to time over the next few days and weeks on, uh, on Facebook, social media. Uh, but at this time, we now come to the executive session portion. I will now entertain a motion to go into a closed determination for executive session.
So moved.
A motion has been made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderman Maroney. We'll have discussion, we'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll now proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, we will have our closed determination right here. There is a matter, a matter of litigation that the city attorney wants to discuss with the Alderman, the mayor. I believe this does meet the definition of reasons to have an executive session, is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, potential litigation and litigation strategy are well within the exceptions to Open Meetings Act and appropriate for executive session.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will, uh, call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I meant to call for an adjournment of the closed determination. I need a motion to adjourn the closed determination.
So who to close?
Alderwoman Irving.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Davis. Now the vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. We'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session for the reasons that have been described. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Davis, discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, we will give a report at the end, but at this moment, our live feed will be, uh, complete. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.